Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. And we have the presentation of colors and the pledge of allegiance from North Buncombe High School tonight. They're going to lead us. It's time. I pledge allegiance to the flag-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd ask that you remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. I would ask for a motion to approve the agenda.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, all those in favor.
Aye.
Any opposed? We'll note the absence of Mr. Craig tonight. His son is playing ball and he is chosen to be a father, and I think that's commendable. At this time, it is the superintendent's comment.
Good evening, everyone. First thing I'd like to do is recognize our distinguished Boy Scout Troop 40 that's in attendance tonight, learning all about government affairs. And also want to recognize our leader, David Kane. We appreciate you gentlemen being here. This week has been all about testing, semester testing in the high schools. And next Wednesday, January 20th, and I also want to thank Mother Nature for keeping a calm week. We are through testing today. Okay, good, because we never know what tomorrow brings.
Well, we have a little makeup tomorrow, don't we?
And we have a little bit of a makeup, so I better be very careful, very cautious what I say. But next Wednesday, if we stay on schedule, January 20th, that will be the new spring semester in our high school for classes. And you may also want to note on your calendars this very important date, and that is mid-year graduation. And that has continued over the years to have more and more graduates participate. And that's going to be January 30th at the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. Ms. Swanger, do you remember what time is that? Is that an afternoon? One o'clock. Okay, one o'clock on January 30th, Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. Our digital learning initiative is fully underway. 5,600 laptops, they have been delivered to classrooms across the entire district. That's grades four, five, and six. And I want to send a very special shout out to the Emma Elementary students because they produced a video to be used across the entire district about how to use, to care for, and use the new Lenovo touchpads. If you haven't had a chance to see that video, I think, Dr. Porter, it's on our website. It is awesome. And I also want to share with you, I was out at Emma last week when those laptops were being distributed. So I had a fourth grade teacher come up and give me a number of index cards. So I had about 30 cards. I'm not going to read all 30, but I was able to pick out just a few to give you the gist of the excitement. The question that the teacher posed was, "What does it mean to you to have this new device?" And the first card read, "It means to me that I'm trusted by the school." The second read, "I really like it because you can find more information with it quicker and can save folders and keep it with you." Third, "It means we get more advanced learning." Better take a note on that, Ms. Swanger. Advanced learning comes with those laptops. I love this one. "It means you need to respect it, hold it the right way, and know how to use it properly." They were probably part of making that video. One said, "I think it is awesome to give kids a computer for learning." And finally, and this is probably my favorite, "It helps me because I need something to move my hand with." Little humor. Very proud of that initiative that's taking place. A reminder on your calendar that all county band performance is this month, is going to be held at North Buncombe High School. Mr. Evans will be hosting that event, beginning at 7:00 PM on January 26th. And during this time of year, it is always valuable to have a backup date. So in the event that that concert on the 26th is postponed, it will be rescheduled a week later, and that will be on February 2nd, same time and same place. In closing, I want to encourage our parents, staff, and public stakeholders to periodically browse our district website. Dr. Porter and his staff provide constant updates and weekly reviews. There is currently a very informative section that I would encourage everyone to read, and that's entitled, "Be Prepared for Winter Weather." I don't think that has a lot to do about the clothing you would wear, but it will help you in terms of being up to date about communications regarding delays or postponements due to weather. If you have a Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, or Pinterest account, you can find Buncombe County Schools represented through a number of very high-quality articles and videos. And in fact, several of those videos are award-winning, and more to come next month regarding those videos. So that concludes my comments for this afternoon.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. It's now time for employee recognition. Donnie Porter.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tonight, we are very fortunate to have two outstanding educators that we'll be recognizing. The first one is Kevin Franklin. He has 20 years of service at INCA High, well, not necessarily INCA High School, but it is interesting to note that he is the 2016 INCA District Teacher of the Year. With 20 years of service, I welcome down Kevin Franklin. Come on down, Kevin. Now, see, people have asked me, how do I come up with questions that I ask when they come up? We want to know Kevin a little bit better. Now, I've already prepped him. He already knows what I'm going to ask. So Kevin, how'd you get an education?
Like so many of us, we've had great teachers in our career, or in our high school career. So my ag teacher had a great influence on me. I grew up on a farm, so I kind of put the two together. And so I went to NC State to become an ag teacher. 20 years later, here I am.
Well, we appreciate you doing that. Are there any moments over your 20 years of service that kind of stand out? Any students that really made an impact in your life?
I think the greatest form of flattery is imitation, so I've had three former students become teachers. So I think that's the greatest thing in my life so far.
Are they in Buncombe County?
None of them, no.
You're killing me, Kevin. Killing me dead. Dr. Baldwin, could you come up? We're going to take a couple of pictures. And the INCA District Representative, Mr. Max Queen? Oh, and you've got a pin as well. There you go. Wear that with pride. And next time students come to Buncombe County, okay? Let's keep them in the family, okay? Station, let me step out. Next to be honored is Ms. Charlene Martin. Yes, go ahead and applaud, absolutely. 30 years of service is Ms. Charlene Martin. She's a teacher at Hominy Valley. She's also the 2015 BCS Math Teacher of the Year. And I was not very good at math, so I'm a little intimidated right now. Charlene, congratulations, 30 years of service. So, as we talked before the meeting, you tell me, you being in education's kind of family tradition. Let us know what that means.
Well, my mother was a teacher here in Buncombe County. She retired with about 28 years. My older sister taught here and retired from Buncombe County. My younger sister, she's in Illinois, sorry. But we're all teachers.
Well, outstanding. I also understand you used to work with somebody very special to us, near and dear. Who would that be, and what is that relationship?
Suzanne Swanger. We taught first grade together at Sand Hill before Sand Hill Venable.
Well, outstanding. Thank you so much for your 30 years of service. Hominy Valley Representative and Dr. Baldwin, come on up.
And Ms. Swanger.
Ms. Swanger, come on up. Come on up. Madam Chair, this concludes the employee recognitions.
Thank you. It's now time for good news. Are you on good news?
I am on.
All right. Lot of good news.
All right, I have a couple of very special recognitions. And the first, we would like to recognize Mr. Jack Connors. Jack is the General Manager of WLOS and WMYA, My40. And I want to start out by saying that Jack had a vision. Had a vision several years ago about bringing high school sports to local television. And he was able to start in South Carolina because at the time, our North Carolina rules and regulations would not allow live broadcasts. But that didn't stop Jack. He continued to remind us how many times he would have especially grandparents and relatives say, you know, "I would love to see my son or daughter on television participating in high school athletics because I can't come to the contests." Jack was very persistent. We were able to work through the North Carolina High School Athletic Association and had a rule change. So this year became the first time that it was allowed for live broadcasts of high school athletic contests. And I can tell you that making that call to Jack, I don't think it was 30 minutes before I got a second call back. And he said, "I don't know how we're going to do it, but we're going to do it. And we're going to bring it to western North Carolina." So through Jack's vision, we had an opportunity for eight schools in western North Carolina. Four of those schools, Buncombe County, that was Irwin, North Buncombe, Robertson, and Owen, had an opportunity to have a football contest televised. But we're recognizing Jack not for televising high school football. And Jack, at this time, I'm going to ask you to come down. We're recognizing Jack because this was not about televising athletics from our standpoint. The way Jack produced these contests, it was all about recognizing all aspects of what made these schools successful. So in this production, I think many of you here had an opportunity to see some of those. We had our principals interviewed, our cheerleading coaches, our band members. We had the particular student athlete that was selected by the school interviewed. We had a teacher in each of the schools interviewed. And this was part of Jack's vision. And this is what we want to recognize him for, is that comprehensive vision that allowed us to advertise the tremendous things that are going on in these high schools. And Jack, I know I'm at superintendent meetings every month, and these school systems all cannot thank you enough for bringing this to life. And we've also asked a special guest here tonight. I want to give you time to speak. But we've invited Chesley Krug and her mother. Chesley is a student athlete from TC Robertson High School. She was selected as their Athlete of the Week. And again, through your vision, at each of these schools, these particular student athletes were recognized with scholarship money for college. And in the case of Chesley, a $3,500 scholarship as the student athlete for the entire Friday Night, Thursday Night Lights. I got to be careful, not Friday Night Lights, Thursday Night Lights. So Jack, again, on behalf of Buncombe County Schools and all of western North Carolina, we want to thank you for your great vision.
Thank you very much. It took a long time to get it done, but it was worth it. And everything that Dr. Baldwin said was correct. I would get, after every game in South Carolina, and God bless the people in South Carolina, I would get calls every single week from parents, brothers, sisters, girlfriends, boyfriends, whatever, saying, "Boy, that was a great broadcast. We sure would like to see something about our kids," you know? Whether it's the band, or whether it's the cheerleaders, or whether it's the athletes themselves. And through the efforts of Bill Miller and Dr. Baldwin, both of them went to the state and got the North Carolina High School Athletic Association to give us, you know, dispensation to do it. And we were able to do those four games. And I can tell you now that within, hopefully, a week or two, I'll be starting to make calls to every school in western North Carolina. We're going to go from four games this year to 10 games next year. So we're going to be doing 10 games in North Carolina, presuming I can get 10 schools that want to do it. And I think that's probably a layup. And then we're going to do six more in South Carolina. So we'll be doing 16 high school football games, all in prime time. And one of the best parts of what I do, and I enjoy my job, one of the best parts is to show that the school community is more than just a football game. Now, we are going to do a good job on the football game, but we want to do things which show the taxpayers and the parents and those who perhaps had kids in your schools, but then the youngsters graduated, that things are still in really, really good shape in Buncombe County and all of western North Carolina. And to memorialize that, I took this off the wall in the station this afternoon. This is our poster for Thursday Night Lights in North Carolina. And you can, you know, do with that as you see fit. But we're going to start the selection process for schools in a couple of weeks. And then hopefully, we'll start the sponsorship elements and see if we can get that pulled together as well. It was an absolute joy to work with the people in all of the Buncombe County schools. And we also did Mitchell, and we did Transylvania. We had a good selection of schools across our coverage area, western North Carolina. And next year, we'll have a better selection of schools because we're going to be doing those 10 games. The scholarship that Chesley won, I'll tell you, as bright and as charming and as smart as this young woman is, the difference between her and the other seven kids who didn't make it is like this much. Every superintendent, or principal, or athletic director would always pick the super student. And every one of them thought that their kids should be recognized the way they were. And it took a long time. We had our first vote, we had eight names in there, we looked at the eight presentations they did, and we got it narrowed down to seven. And I told the other people on the committee, I said, "All right, well, that's movement." But it isn't really where we have to go. And after about four or five different votes, Chesley wound up winning the scholarship. Every young person from the home school and the visiting school got a plaque just like this. And the NCAA tells me that this has to be what they call de minimis value, so I wouldn't mess up anybody's college athletic eligibility, and I certainly don't want to do that. So Chesley got this, but she's also going to get the $3,500 college scholarship, and it is richly deserved. She is a wonderful example of what public education is doing and the kind of students that they are graduating in western North Carolina.
Thank you.
Franklin, would you like to come around?
Certainly.
We did this at TC Robertson, and everyone had a big smile on their face. And we're going to re-present it now. It says, "And the scholarship money was provided by Emery Electric." So we certainly want to recognize the people who came up with the money for the scholarship. It says, "My40 WMYATV 2015 Scholar-Athlete of the Week, Emery Electric." And every young person who was selected by their school got a plaque just like this. So we gave it to you, you gave it back, now we're giving it back to you again.
I just want to thank WLOS and Emery Electric for the scholarship, and Mr. Connors for all of his hard work for this, and very thankful for the opportunity.
Well, we're very glad that you had it. And when I walked in, I thought that you were here with your sister. All right. Thank you for your help and your cooperation. And, Dr. Baldwin, what a terrific job. And I couldn't have been, couldn't have been happier when he called me and he said, "We finally got the papal blessing so we can move forward with this." And, you know, we're just ready to go.
Jack, we also have a little token of our appreciation here. And this is a clock to commemorate the time and the time of the vision. Buncombe County Schools presenting with heartfelt gratitude for your vision and dedication to showcasing the students and programs of Buncombe County Schools. Mr. Jack Connors, WLOS WMYATV. Thank you again.
Thank you very much. Our sponsorship presentations to pay for this, because each game costs about $11,000 to put on the air. When we start, we're going to have, make sure we take this out to every single presentation. People who are running the school system understand the value of what we're doing for the school system. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chase.
Jack talked about how competitive that was. I did a little research on Chesley. And she is number one in her class of 352 at Robertson High School, and her grade point average is 5.125. Is that not incredible? So that had to be a really competitive process to go through. When you look at any type of research studies that take place regarding successful schools, and those studies are the best attempt at trying to identify what's the key to making those schools successful. And almost to the last study, that research clearly indicates that one of the key ingredients to the success of any school is the leadership that comes from the principal. And we are so blessed in Buncombe County to have the quality of leadership that we have in our administrators throughout all 43 schools. Year in, year out, there is a process that takes place that's supported, sponsored by Wells Fargo, that allows each school system in the state to select their Principal of the Year. And I had to take, as a former high school principal, I had to take a lot of pride and pleasure in hearing the name Mr. Jack Evans announced as Buncombe County's Principal of the Year. A little bit about Jack, and I'll promise you, I'll keep it short. He has a huge ballgame taking place right now at North Buncombe, so we don't want to hold him up. 27 years in our school system. Six and a half as an outstanding principal at Owen Middle School, and 11 years as just an outstanding principal at North Buncombe High School. Jack, I'm going to ask you to come down. And as Jack is walking to the microphone, just want to read what student leaders on his advisory council said about Jack Evans. Uh-oh. This is payback. "Principal Evans is an excellent leader who cares deeply about the welfare of his students. He values parent and student input and has striven to inspire students to have pride in our school and to work for our dreams. He advocates for student organizations and tries to give us as many opportunities as possible to gain real-world experience to help us reach our goals. He is an active member of our community and continues to give back to it, giving back much more than he has ever been given." Jack is also a world traveler. He has been to Denmark with those students. He has traveled as an ambassador for Buncombe County Schools to China. And Jack, clearly what this says to me is that you are not only a teacher's principal, which I've heard on so many occasions, but you are maybe even more importantly, a student's principal. So at this time, let's recognize our Principal of the Year, Mr. Jack Evans.
Thank you, Dr. Baldwin. Much like the data that he recently talked about, a school is only as good as its teachers as well. I work with some of the most amazing teachers you'll ever see in a classroom. Our community is so supportive of us in the Weaverville area. But he's right. The funnest part of the job is still the funnest part of the job, the kids. When they become the tough part of the job, you're going to see a lot of people leaving the education. They are amazing. They'll brighten your day every day. They'll frustrate you every day, but you love them every day. So it is amazing job to be recognized, as he said, as a principal in Buncombe County. Our principals and assistant principals are amazing. What they do every day is amazing. The hours they put in only is surpassed by the love they have for their students. Watch them. Watch them sit out after dances at 12 and 1 o'clock in the morning, waiting for that parent to show up. Watch them buy things for their own, and they don't want any recognition for it, for their children. Happens all the time, and we don't want anybody to know. I don't like being up here, to just be personally honest, for this. So, but thank you to my colleagues. Thank you for our central office that is so supportive of us. So again, keep supporting the best part of the job, the students. Thank you, Doc.
Forward, we have a certificate for Mr.
Ford, we have a certificate for Mr. Evans.
He changes a mean tire, too.
I won. For the moment.
I'm going to turn this over to our Associate Superintendent, Ms. Suzanne Swanger.
We're going to continue with the good news, and I have two special teacher recognitions. So at this time, I would like to invite Ms. Catherine Brown, North Buncombe High School teacher, down to... And Susan Swan, would you join us? It's fabulous that you're getting to be honored at the same time as your principal. Ms. Catherine Brown of North Buncombe High School was recently recognized at the 65th Annual Department of Public Instruction Conference for Exceptional Children as Buncombe County Schools Teacher of Excellence. So congratulations for being recognized outside of Buncombe County for all of your work, as well as inside. She works daily to support her students first and foremost, but then also the teachers who also care for those students. And a couple of special quotes that I learned about Ms. Brown. This one is my favorite. "She lifts kids up. Her smile, soft voice, and support goes far with students." So thank you for lifting our students up. Her administration says, "Our school would suffer without her guidance, her support, and her caring nature. She is extraordinary." So thank you for what you do, and congratulations on being the Teacher of Excellence from Exceptional Children. Ms. Jan Caldwell, come on down. Another Teacher of Excellence, Ms. Jan Caldwell was recently recognized for being an outstanding science educator. She has the passion for science, as well as all studies in her classroom, but especially for science. So the North Carolina State Teachers Association for Science just recognized you in November at their conference, and I understand they had a beautiful plaque for you, and more importantly, your son from NC State University was there when you were celebrated. So this lady does incredible projects, the trout project that you might have seen, I know you've had your students in the wetlands, and all kinds of things. So we want to honor you as being a North Carolina Teacher of Science representing our district. So congratulations.
I have to get Mr. Quinn and me a pair of shoes.
Thank you, Jan, congratulations. Ms. Kayne Lamb, our graduation initiative team, our director, and she will introduce her team and invite another special recognition.
I will ask my team to please come forward, and also Mr. Murdock, if you'll come up with our team as well, you're part of us. Madam Chairman, Members of the Board, Dr. Baldwin. The Compass Award recognizes schools and school leaders who are heading in the right direction by implementing best practice in dropout prevention. The Graduation Initiative, in partnership with Evelyn Charities Foundation, awards the Compass Award yearly to the primary, elementary, intermediate, middle, or high school that leads the way with various strategies and methods designed to encourage and keep students in school until graduation. But before I do that presentation, I want to thank Bill Murdock, and appreciate him being here with us tonight. The Graduation Initiative's existence, very existence, is the result of a strong partnership with the Evelyn Foundation, and as a partner, we want to make this prestigious award together tonight. I also want to recognize Emily Walters, Sharon Fish, and Jill Connor, who are what I call irrationally committed to keeping students in school. Regardless of what it takes, they're there to provide that, and they work so hard within the schools and with our leaders and teachers at the school level. And this is evidenced by the fact that in 2014-15, Buncombe County Schools had three of our six traditional high schools who were 90% or higher with their graduation rate, and we had one other school at 89.8%. So as you can see, Buncombe County Schools are well on their way to reaching our goal of having a 90% graduation rate for all of our schools and have that as a system goal. And now, the highlight of our recognition tonight, the winner of the Compass Award is AC Reynolds High School. I want to ask Ms. Sellers and her staff representatives to please come forward in the center of the floor area, and I'm going to start telling you a little bit about why they won this award, as they are coming down. They have a mentoring program where faculty members mentor students year-long. They safely track these PBIS strategies, which makes David Thompson extremely happy. They have embedded intervention time during the day where students can get remediation, tutoring, and enrichment, and also clubs and intramurals meet at that time. They have an at-risk team, including administrators, who meet religiously each week to triage at-risk students and determine what interventions are needed and who will follow up to see that they happen. They consistently use data to track student progress. They pair at-risk students in their incoming ninth-grade class with faculty members to help with that difficult transition year. The posting of learning targets in classrooms is an expectation that is monitored regularly by administrators, which makes Suzanne Swanger extremely happy. Teachers host learning walks to share best practices. They use their Graduation Initiative specialists in a very intentional manner to reduce dropouts. The counselors meticulously check student records for all juniors and seniors to make individual plans for students to graduate within their cohort. And especially important, there is a prevailing school culture that promotes graduation for all students. Finally, in 2008 and '09, they reported 46 dropouts at AC Reynolds High School. That number has decreased every year, and in 2014-15, they had decreased that number to 18 dropouts. I love the teens. This is a 65% reduction in the number of students leaving school as dropouts. This computes to a dropout rate of 1.32% at Reynolds High School, and a four-year cohort graduation rate of 90.6%. These are amazing results, and just a testament to their laser-like focus on the dropout issue. So congratulations to AC Reynolds High School. I ask Mr. Bill Murdock if he would please do the honors of making the presentation.
You know, it's always a great honor. We think about this, and before I start too, you know, Jack Evans, certainly congratulations. And one thing that wasn't in all the great accolades that Dr. Baldwin read was Jack was the beginning and the reason that the Evelyn Charities, our Food for Thought Program, our Ingles Food for Thought Program, and our school, and our lunch program started with one phone call from Jack years and years ago, and thousands upon thousands of children have gotten snacks and lunch and all of that just from that one phone call. So Jack, you know, we appreciate that very, very much, and so do, you know, a lot of folks, so thank you for that. Again, the only thing, the sad part about this is that Joe Evelyn is not here. You know, Joe's been gone for about two and a half years, and you know, as an educator and certainly the great honor, Dr. Baldwin, the school board that you bestowed on Joe with the Evelyn Intermediate School, you know, certainly was a crowning achievement that he's so very proud of. But seven years ago, the Graduation Initiative was just an idea. It was built upon what seemed to be a growing trend in the dropout rate in Buncombe County, and looking at how we could build on what was working, but look at something different. How could this tide be turned? And reach out to these students who are choosing to drop out, they were risking their future by not finishing their education. But the value of an idea isn't in the idea, and actually, I think ideas are pretty worthless, unless an idea is put into action, unless those ideas are implemented. And I don't think there's anything stronger than an idea whose time has come. And Baldwin can certainly tell you, and everyone in those early days, that it wasn't easy to do. As we talk about, to change the culture, to change the idea of how dropout prevention was, and just in the name alone, Graduation Initiative, turned the whole thing around. It wasn't preventing dropouts, it was looking toward that every student would graduate, not stay in school, but actually to graduate. And thanks to Dr. Baldwin and Cliff Dodson's, you know, vision, their commitment, their courage to be able to step out and do this. Last summer, I was in Waterloo, Iowa, speaking to their school board and to their Chamber of Commerce and their leaders, and this week, we got an email saying, "When can we come down to Buncombe County? When can we all come down and see really what's going on here?" So they will be coming here in the near future to visit us, as we did up in the great state of Iowa. And corn and wrestling, about the only things up there, but they may not want to go back after they come here. You know, they're not from Asheville, but they're getting here as fast as they can. But again, it is just so amazing, not only the numbers, but the commitment and the fact that this chance was taken to be able to step up and do something different. And to the surprise of many, it not only succeeded, but it continues to succeed. The numbers continue to drop, and that is a testament to everyone that's standing here, and everybody in Buncombe County, everybody in Buncombe County Schools. It's been said that victory has a hundred fathers, but defeat is an orphan. And Tony and I talk about this a lot, there is no lack of people jumping on the bandwagon, no lack of organizations, people saying, "It's because of what we're doing that this is happening." But we're here to honor the folks who are here that are actually doing it, the ones who deserve this great honor. You know, Dr. Baldwin, certainly all, everyone here, the Buncombe County School Board, you know, it takes great leadership. It takes someone with that vision and that courage and that commitment, and just rolling up your sleeves, you know, and doing whatever you have to do to make sure this happens. It's easy to start initiatives. It's easy to begin something, come up with a great name and a logo and move forward. What's hard is to keep it going. What's hard is to make sure it's a success every single day, every single year, and seven years is amazing. You know, we made a commitment at the luncheon that day, that Evelyn had a 10-year commitment, which actually I didn't mention to the board till that day. So, you know, as long as the program is going on, we certainly will be here, not only financially, and thanks to Buncombe County Government, the Board of Commissioners, you know, Mandy Stone, Wanda Green, all those great folks are the ones that helped keep this going too. So they're a partner in this, just as much as Evelyn Charities is. But it's the folks that are here that we're here to honor and to thank. And it's a great honor that, for Evelyn Charities, and a great honor certainly for the Center for Social Enterprise, to be part of this, to be able to see, you know, what great work has been done here. And, you know, Dr. Baldwin, again, all of you here, you know, certainly Donna Lanahan or in the early days, you know, again, a lot of courage kept, you know, coming up with something new and facing opposition, you know, as it was, just because of a tide of change. And, you know, Kaye Lamb coming in, you know, with her exemplary leadership, you know, picking up the baton and moving it forward, you know, moving it light-years ahead in just such a very short time. And Jill, it's Connor now, right? You told me that, so, right? Jill Connor, you know, certainly Sharon Fish, and Emily Walters, you know, all of you, you know, have made such a great difference in this whole community, not just in the school community, but for all of us, for everyone who lives here. You know, the future is a whole lot brighter because of what you all have done. And we're here tonight for the Compass Award. It's not just another award. This is something that means a lot to Evelyn Charities. It means a lot to the community and certainly the Graduation Initiative. And, you know, Ms. Sellers, you know, congratulations to you, everyone at AC Reynolds High School, and, you know, again, the tremendous job that's made the community much better for all of us to live in. And, you know, it's kind of difficult to say, but being a graduate from Robertson to, you know, after all these years, to present this, I'm very happy to do so. And so I should let you know that tonight, we're all Rockets here, so congratulations.
And this rings the Compass Award, heading in the right direction, AC Reynolds High School, 2015, from the Graduation Initiative and Evelyn Charities. Congratulations.
Cindy, you want to get our picture? Get your picture with the group?
Madam Chair Franklin, Dr. Baldwin, members of the board, and our guests, we do just want to say, as Reynolds High School, we are very honored to be the recipient of the Compass Award that's sponsored by Evelyn Charities and Evelyn Social Enterprise. Years ago, five years ago, we set a goal, our school improvement team, for a 90% graduation rate, and we were running right around 83, 84, and we would move up, but it would be like a tenth of a point, maybe a point, and we would celebrate that, but you always want to have a goal that you can reach. And we would look and we would think, wow, we're a long way away from 90%. And I would think, did we make a mistake by setting that goal that we really couldn't reach? This team meets every single week. We designate 90 minutes a week that pretty much our staff knows, unless the building's on fire or somebody is doing something really, really bad, they do not need to come into that room. And that room consists of administrators, our counselors, our social worker, our nurse, our school resource officer joins us, and we really look at any needs, whether they be academic, behavioral, family, financial, whatever needs that the students have, we look at those. And we leave there with a plan, and throughout the week, they set up strategies and interventions. It may be home visits, we're looking for housing, clothing, whatever it may be, to help meet the needs of these students so they can be successful. So as we would look at that rate, and it would not quite approach 90%, we would get a little frustrated because we were looking to help the students, and that would always be our focus. And last year, when Ms. Walters came in and said, "We are really getting close to 90% and we have a number we have never had before on our dropouts," we really got excited because we knew, and this team knows, that every statistic is not just about a mathematical number, it's about a child. And it's about changing the life and the course of a life for a child that would have been different had they not chosen to stay in school. So I want to say, it's a faculty and staff effort from our entire group at Reynolds High School, but these folks here tonight represent, some of the ones from our school improvement team chair, to our counselors and administrators with us, the efforts that they make every single week, and they're here tonight to not only thank you, Dr. Baldwin, to thank you, Mr. Murdock, also to recognize Kaye Lamb and Jill, I mean, Emily Walters is our graduation specialist, but let me just tell you, I've worked with all of these ladies, Jill, who will always be Jill Castello because I taught her, and Sharon Fish, and we've worked in the summer when the heat, I know, exceeded 100 degrees in our building to make things happen for students, and these ladies, they do not stop for anything, and looking for out-of-the-way, just out-of-the-box ideas to help a student succeed. Our community's great, Reynolds community will come up and help us financially, they'll provide mentors, tutors, whatever we need, and then we cannot make this with just the invaluable resource of Evelyn Charities. When we call them, they help, whatever it may be, whether it be clothing, housing, meals for our kids, whatever it is, you are always there, and just a phone call away, we thank you for that, Mr. Murdock. So we do accept this tonight, on behalf of our entire faculty, but I also really want to say, I feel like on behalf of all of Buncombe County Schools, because this has been an initiative that took place that I feel like every school, kindergarten through 12th grade, works hard, just started at a very, very young age to make sure our students are successful. So thank you very much.
Right, scrunch up guys, so you can get a good picture. It's going to go on the web. It's going to go on the web.
Does this mean we need to move? We're at the Spanish.
That's soothing.
Yeah, I know, but do we need to move?
Madam Chair, members of the board, the curriculum feature this evening, we are going to go back to 2012 when our superintendent had a great vision for us to expand language opportunities in our schools. You took that charge. We created the strategic plan. We have increased our language opportunities for students, and we're going to highlight one of those programs this evening. At this time, I would like to thank Dr. Sherri Boone, who's sitting over there. She has taken over the global chair in our department and is working much too hard and enjoying much too much these wonderful experiences for our teachers and our students, in addition to her beginning teacher duties. But tonight, we're going to look at an elementary program. I'm going to ask Ms. Candy Sellers, our elementary intermediate director, to come up, and we're going to give you a snippet of what's happening in a dual-language immersion classroom.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Baldwin and board members. We are excited to share with you tonight an extraordinary program that was a vision of our superintendent's. And he recruited Cynthia Lopez to do some research. And Cynthia recruited a team of us in curriculum and other areas to help her with that research. We read books, we had discussions, we visited schools, we visited school systems, we had lots of discussions, and then we started implementing the vision for, that Dr. Baldwin had our global initiative, his global initiative. And like Ms. Swanger said, we want to thank Dr. Boone. She plays a key role in the success of these programs and what we do. And we want to thank Mrs. Lopez for all that you did to help get these programs started and off the ground so that we can be where we are today. So we are just going to give you a little bit of a commercial, if you will, of this program because it is very detailed. There's lots of great things going on in the classrooms each and every day, and we would be up here for days telling you about what they do. And we have some very special guests at the end, and we want to make sure that we have time for them because that's the heart of the program that you're going to want to hear about. So for our school system, this program helps develop our unactivated brain areas and increasing activity, problem-solving skills, so that our students will be successful in the 21st century. Our statement that we came up with, our mission statement for our Buncombe County School Language Program, is to provide a multicultural learning environment that enables our students to communicate in other languages and to promote understanding and respect while empowering the community. And I think that's a very strong mission statement. Some of our highlights that we have, we have a one-way immersion program, and that is at Glen Arden Elementary. And they speak Spanish for most of their day. Now, when they go to PE and their specials, they're speaking English. But in their classroom, they are speaking Spanish all day long. And we have some classrooms in our three other schools where it is a two-way immersion, where they speak both Spanish and English during the school day. So in 2011, 2012, we implemented the Splash Program at Glen Arden Elementary. That program is now, has now moved up to fourth grade, which you're going to hear from a couple of those fourth graders this afternoon. We have, in 2013, we have the two-way immersion at Avery's Creek and at Oakley Elementary. And in 2014, we implemented the two-way dual-language at W.D. Williams. For Buncombe County Schools, you can see our schools up there, but I think the important part is the total. We have 278 students participating in this program currently. And our goal, along with our superintendent's goal, is to have one of these programs in each district, each of our six districts in Buncombe County Schools. I'm going to turn it over to Ladonna Sluter, who is one of our curriculum coaches. She does a beautiful job at Avery's Creek and Glen Arden, serving as their coach. Not only does she work with both of those schools, she has played a key role in pulling together all of our schools and the teachers in our immersion programs, having PLCs, helping provide PD, professional development for our teachers, and just going out to dinner and letting these teachers get to know one another and share and talk about their experiences as they're here because they're all from all over the world. We have teachers from Honduras, Colombia, Venezuela, and Mexico and Ecuador. So just a wonderful group of folks to work with. So Ladonna, I'm going to let you take it over.
Thank you. Also, just like to say thank you for the support with this program. It's been a highlight in my career. This is 29 years for me. And so the teachers, the administration, the support, and of course, working alongside Dr. Boone is just phenomenal. So the support in this program is phenomenal. With professional development, we offer a little orientation when our teachers arrive. Like Ms. Sellers said, they're from all over the world. So when they first arrive from Buncombe County, we want to make sure that they have that special time together, meet each other, and then that gives us an opportunity to hone in to their special needs and questions. And if you can imagine, just being a beginning teacher, but from another part of the world, like she said, as Honduras, and bringing their families here. So we do that little orientation with them, which has been very beneficial. And then that leads us into, like Ms. Sellers said, the monthly PLCs. We meet once a month at every school and we collaborate. We have a wonderful little snack to kick off the meeting, and they bring meals and prepare meals from their country, which has been very interesting for myself too and learning. But we look at data, we look at best practices, and we're always trying to tweak our program. Dr. Boone has set up some teams to go towards Durham, North Carolina. We have, we're also going to Statesville, and we're always trying to tweak our program. But those PLCs have been a vital part of our growth and our program in supporting those teachers. Another thing that we do, we also bring our teachers in once in the fall and the spring for PD. In the fall, we worked on ELA with the teachers and how to support them as far as English versus Spanish. And then tomorrow, actually, we're bringing them in tomorrow and looking at math. Again, driving, looking at the data, best practices and how we can tweak our program. We have 14 teachers now, close to 300 students. I'm so glad that Dr. Baldwin, Ms. Lopez, and the support from the administration is looking to make sure that we grow our program. To highlight our year, we have an end-of-the-year celebration. I'd like to invite everybody, it'll be up on the website. We meet in May. Last year, we had about 100 families come together with all four schools. We had a picnic, and it was a good way to bridge that community amongst the four schools in the district. And so look for that on the website. But I'm going to hush too because we have some very good little children here. Narci Carranza, if you'll come on up, she's our fourth-grade stellar teacher. I have the opportunity to work side close and go into her classroom daily. Now, honestly, I don't speak Spanish. I don't really know what they're saying. But the children are really good with Ms. Sluter because they will translate after I ask them what they're talking about. So she has brought Oliver and Ginny Beth with us. And so I would just like to highlight, this is our one-way immersion. These students have been with us since kindergarten. So this is their fifth year in the full immersion, like Ms. Sellers said. And our research shows that after five or six years with this program, that the children will become belligerent. And this, we're going to show you that right now tonight. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Carranza and the students.
Buenas noches. Good night, good evening. My name is Narci Carranza. I am a member of an elegant profession. I am an educator. I'm an international educator.
The name of her is Narci Carranza. She is a member of a profession elegant.
To my side, you will meet Oliver and Ginny Beth.
My name is Oliver Blackwood.
And she is?
Ginny Beth Crandall.
These children are part of the first class at Buncombe County, and I am very proud to be their teacher.
We were part of the first class, and she is very proud to be our teacher.
These children are learning fourth-grade curriculum in both languages. Yes, they are learning about the lost colony, the faces of the moon, North Carolina's regions and history, and they're doing it in both languages.
We are learning about the lost colony, the faces of the moon, the regions of North Carolina of the north in Spanish and English.
As you can see, Oliver can understand what I'm sharing with you naturally, and he can convey my thoughts and my words in a second language. I just want to take a minute to applaud the county for broadening everyone's horizons. And when I mean everyone, I'm talking about students, staff and administrators.
I applaud the county for making the horizon more large for students, personnel and administrators.
At Glen Arden, teachers and administrators coordinate planning to make sure that English and Spanish correlate. And it's, we really strive to make it seamless. And just by listening to them, it's, there are not enough words.
She is very proud of us.
Why?
Because we learn Spanish and English.
Thank you, Oliver. Ginny Beth is going to share her work. These children have 90% of their instruction in Spanish and 10% in English. Their reading levels are above grade level in English and Spanish. And I'll just let her show her, I am, read her I Am poem and a couple of other things. Okay? You ready?
Okay, this is the I Am poem. Everyone in my classroom did one. For some reason, she tells me to share mine. Okay, here it is. I'm gutsy and adventurous. I wonder when I will get my braces off. It was due to get off in October, seriously. I hear the wind rustle the leaves. I see people writing in their notebooks. I'm gutsy and adventurous. I pretend to have glasses. Now, this was written before I got glasses. I feel like I will get good grades. I touch my dog. I worry about Chloe Bell. She's one of the other girls in my classroom, like broken her arm numerous times, numerous times. I cry when I think about my old dog that went to heaven. Very sad, huh? I am gutsy and adventurous. I understand I am lucky to have what I have. Yeah. I say that this school is a good school. I hope to be a marine biologist when I grow up. I'm gutsy and adventurous. Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Why am I in the Spanish immersion program? Well, I have been in the immersion program since kindergarten. My parents thought that this was a great educational opportunity, and so it was. And so did many others. I think that the immersion program helped me with English as well as Spanish words. I like the idea that I will be able to understand the language of people from a different country. Thank you. Okay, we read, we read like books in class. Yeah, and one of them was The Tale of Despero. I'm going to read you the epilogue in Spanish. Remember when Despero was in the mud puddles, accompanied by the hand of Gregorio, the prisoner, and whispered a story to the old man? I would like to think of you as a rat that tells a story. This story tells my heart, whispering to your ears to save me from the darkness, and also to save you from the darkness. The stories bring light, said Gregorio, the prisoner to Despero. Lecturer, I hope you found a little light in this. Thank you.
And just like Despero, I want to thank everyone for bringing more light to education, especially in our multilingual setting. I am very happy to be here and happy to have shared them with you all. Thank you. Good night. Buenas noches.
Thank you. Wonderful job. Great job. Thank you for being here. That was wonderful. I think that's all, I think that's all you need to say, that I don't need to say anything else. A very successful program with very dedicated teachers and coaches and administrators. And again, thank you, Dr. Baldwin and Ms. Swanger, for letting us pursue this and for supporting it because it's a great program. Thank you.
At this time, we'll skip over public comment because we don't have any. And we'll move on to the action agenda. The first item on the agenda is the 1516 Budget Amendment Number One. And you can see that Ms. Frisbee is making her way to the microphone in case there are board members that have questions. At this time, I would entertain a question.
You can count on me for a question, Madam Chair.
Oh, good.
Thank you, Ms. Frisbee, for your work on this. On page two, under the Federal Grants Fund, in the text explaining the changes, the last sentence there says, "The increase to the non-programmed charges, 8xx, is due to increasing unbudgeted funds for subsequent year budgets." Could you translate this into English for me, please? Thank you.
The federal programs, we're always required to submit those budgets, usually in the spring of the current fiscal year for the next fiscal year. So we still have activity going on for usually three or four months. So when we have to submit those budgets, we take the most So when we have to submit those budgets, we take the most up-to-date information available at the time and prepare those budgets and submit them to DPI. So between the time we submit the budgets and the end of the fiscal year, there might be differences. So when we try to project the actual carryovers, sometimes those differences, they are different. So it's hard to predict exactly how you're going to end when you have to submit them in March and April. So what happens is the federal fiscal year runs October through September, and the state fiscal year runs July through June. So from July to September, we're required to rely on the carryover for the federal programs to sustain our operations until the new money comes down. And so we put that in the non-program charge, which is a little bit misleading, but it is money that's carried over that will be budgeted into those other purpose-function line items. It's just the nature of how the federal money flows, so.
That's a long translation.
It is a long translation.
Thank you very much.
You're quite welcome.
Anyone else?
I have a quick question, and I might have answered it after going back and rereading, but I, again, just want to make sure that I'm thinking around, going around it the right way. The changes, the decreases that we're seeing in some of these with the State Public School Fund, it looks like that's due to the reconciliation of the headcount between the local education agency charter schools and virtual schools. Is that what I'm seeing?
It is, and that is twofold. Part of that reduction is on our exceptional children's headcount. We had 17 students that transferred out. We had eight that came in, so we had a net loss of 11 students. So part of that decrease is because of the reconciliation of that headcount. And then our allotments were reduced by 40 virtual charter school students. And that was not part of the other charter schools. Those are brand-new this year. So the data was not available at the time they did the other charter school reduction. So we lost more money there for those.
Did I answer your question, Ms. Churchill?
It did, and I'm glad I was thinking along the right way.
Good. Another question? Hearing no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve the 1516 Budget Amendment One as presented.
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Bryant, is there a second?
I'll second.
Is that Churchill? Okay. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you.
I just am always amazed at the abilities to work these budgets.
Oh, well, thank you. I want to go into the dual immersion program, though. I want to learn how to speak Spanish.
You'd rather translate Spanish than...
I can't tell you the number of times I've taken Spanish unsuccessfully. All right. At this time, we're going to have the INCA IS procurement of furnishings and equipment, and Mr. Fairley is in charge. Oh, Mr. Ventarella can come down, too. All right, gentlemen. Board member, do you have a presentation, or are you just taking questions?
I can take questions. I'm glad to give you a brief overview. I'm sure you understand it.
Let's try for questions. How about that?
Very good.
All right. Board members, do you have questions about the information that we've been given on these items?
I do.
Of course.
Of course. So the information you've presented is quite comprehensive in terms of what's included, but it doesn't say what the budget was for the furnishings and equipment for the INCA Intermediate School. Can you talk a little bit about how these expenses compare to budget?
Yes, so the original budget had basically $1,000 per student for furnishings and equipment, and that is 850 student schools, so $850,000. In addition, we took some credits from the general contract and took a few things out to purchase separately that you see in here. The kiln, performing arts furnishings, that would be more appropriate for storage of instruments as opposed to straight shelving that was provided in the general contract. So this, it kind of all balances out credits from the general construction contract and then our original budget for the furnishings and equipment that we...
So it might understand, then, that we're a little over in terms of furnishing and equipment, but we're making that up in other areas? Is that kind of what you're seeing happening?
That's the intention. We have some credits for signage and things that we're balancing out and putting towards us. There will be further equipment-type things, like office equipment, custodial equipment that you'll see at a later date to complete the school.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Then I would entertain a motion to approve the issuance of the purchase orders for the three furnishing vendors and for furniture and equipment at INCA Intermediate School.
Madam Chair, I make the motion that we issue purchase orders to the three furnishing vendors for furniture and equipment for INCA Intermediate School.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Spoken by our true INCA representative. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll just say, as an editorial note, that there was an example of some of the furniture Mr. Fairley had for us tonight, and it's quite interesting how a school desk has changed since the '60s.
And I appreciate that it's left-handed friendly, so thank you for that.
Looking to meet everybody's needs. So we have voted... Did I take the vote?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, but you guys can stay in your place, because the next item is the certification of the 1516 DPI Facilities Needs Survey. Mr. Fairley has been working on this diligently.
So every five years, the Department of Public Instruction asks all LEAs to report facility needs and basically a snapshot of facility conditions across the state, so that they can use that, they can compile it and use it for understanding the status or the snapshot of where public education is in terms of capital, that is, buildings and such, non-staff. So they have a very extensive calculator that asks a lot of questions about our energy usage, our capacities. They predict membership of our schools for 10 years and then compare our reported capacities to that. They, in addition, ask about facility needs for 10 years. And based on when those needs are predicted to occur, if they're in years zero to two now, in other words, that would show up as a top priority. They also have a calculator that, when you plug in the characteristics of your facility need, whether it's roofing or replacement of boilers, chillers, kind of big-dollar items, they have a calculator, kind of a one-size-fits-all for across the state from statistics they've gathered from LEAs in the past, and they apply dollar amounts to those. And it all comes together in these summary reports that you've been given. There's a whole lot of worksheets that have additional detail that I'm glad to share with you and that we use as a real good planning tool for our springtime facility work session that will be coming up. Any questions?
Questions? I'm always amazed at how we have all this... I forget what it is that they say in maintenance about how many square feet do we have of building space. Do you know that right off the top of your head?
We have over 4.5 million square feet of roofs that keep me up in those torrential rains over Christmas time.
And so proportionally, that would be...
So we've got, I don't know the number off the top of my head, but, you know, we have two-story buildings that maybe two stories would be covered by one roof. We're in the vicinity of 6 million square feet of building space.
And our staff takes care of that quite effectively. Any other questions? Then I would entertain a motion that we certify the Facilities Needs Report Survey.
Madam Chair, I would move that we certify the report and forward to NCDPI for pending approval by county commissioners.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much, gentlemen. It's time for the consent agenda. Under the consent agenda tonight, we have the minutes from November 20, special call to open session; December 3, open session; the personnel report with the addendum; Reynolds Middle School requests for use of capital outlay athletic allotment; Advisory Council member changes; and Pisgah Elementary change of bank. Do I have a motion to approve consent agenda?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I'll call attention to the information portion of the agenda for the board and the two policies that are on for first reading. That would be Policy 4003 and Policy 3400. I will announce at this time that our future meetings, we have a mid-year graduation on January 30, as we previously mentioned. According to this document, it's at 11:00. We might want to check on that, huh? The time of the mid-year graduation.
11:00 is correct.
Is it 11:00? Okay. I thought we had said a different time. Thank you. And then we have a regular meeting coming up February 4 at 6:30 here in this facility. And our spring NSBA meeting is April 9 through 11. And the week of February 1 through February 5 is Counselor Appreciation Week. And we certainly want to thank those people that help us in all of the needs that we have at our schools. At this time, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, boys and girls, for being here.